D and D of what was the?
D and D was.
Three sixty five.
Three sixty five and Emerald Green is four twenty-five fifty-eight.
Dave did a fair job on that.
But we have to get it with Dave to charge it, so Dave might be coming up for charging it.
Oh, Dave, that, okay.
I didn't ask because.
Yeah, it'll be separate bill. I talked to Dave.
I was just gonna say, that's not bad if they charged it and put the coil in.
Well, they had to tear the whole front end off the truck, so I still think that's pretty good.
No, I agree. I agree.
I make a motion, we accept the approval, set agenda with the addition of the two bills.
Motion made, we have a second? Chester second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Hey, L K Sheriff, you're up.
Required forty-three, we put in just over fifty, thirteen calls of service. Looks like pretty standard stuff.
July fourth, oh fireworks. I wish the city Cedar Rapids could've said that.
I bet they do. They will.
I've already heard some rumors.
Any questions for you like that?
Rough night, good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks guys.
Thank you.
Okay. Fire Department.
We had two calls for June, we had a throw launch, then we went over, get your late assistance and save the tornado. The engine and stuff. We got a phone call, our air packs are in, but they have yet to deliver them. How many was there? Four. Doesn't matter, I seem to be working good over there.
Any questions for me?
Brad here, I'm right here.
I had prepared a update for our screen. All the subgrain design and some connections are in for between main and third right now. We'll do the rest of it here once they get done paving, but. They removed all the existing pavement along between third and main. They did, we did do a proof roll on the soils underneath the pavement, it was pretty soft, so we had them core out another twelve inches and put down some larger breaker rock underneath it. Those numbers, that quantity was already in the bid, so it was not additional cost, but. We had it in there as a, as approved by engineers, so if the soils were good, we could've avoided that cost, but. They were pretty, pretty bad when we saw them, so they had an extra twelve inches of rock in, plus the six inches of regular roads, rock that they have underneath the concrete. So now it's real solid. We had trucks run over now and it doesn't even. Ride out to anywhere now, so it's real solid. Everyone's pretty happy with the base now. Plan is for tomorrow, we'll actually start paving. Paving from, turn to main street, all the way over to third, so hopefully by the end of day tomorrow, we'll have. That whole section poured. Obviously it'd be closed still. They're saying it's been about forty-eight hours before it gets to complete, or it gets to, uh, concrete cures enough to be able to at least meet spec, so hopefully next week sometime, early next week, we'll be able to allow maybe some residents to get at least park on the street. They won't have the driveways in yet, the intersections won't be done yet, but. At least allow them to shorten their walk from groceries and all that stuff, so. Follow that up with, I assume, the intersection of main street, and then move over to. Third Avenue and last, so. In a second, I'll fly in the second crew in that are doing driveways. E N F, I was told actually today, it's that E N F will be doing the driveways as well, so.
Oh, they will be.
Yeah, that's the guy, the phone told me today, so. So if there's anyone that is wanting extra driveway width put in. I guess we'll have to get ahold of me and I can get ahold, give them the number for the contractor, but. You know, the city's just paying for what it's required to get in the planes, I guess, to get them tied in. If anyone wants even wider, it's gonna be a, the homeowner will have to work out a deal with the contractor if they want to go wider. I know there's a couple residents down there who've already mentioned that, so. It's up to them to kind of coordinate that with the contractor or work with their own contractor.
And they do this pour, that curb and gutter will go in later next year.
Yep, all one pour.
All one pour.
Yep.
Cool.
So if you pull with, you know, they'll lower it for the driveways, it's a six inch curve, and then they'll have the driveway cut towards, maybe go inch and a half or something like that. And then, yeah, so they'll all have.
So it's all done in one pour?
One pour.
Excellent.
It'll take forty-eight hours, as long as we keep everyone off it over the weekend, but by Monday, you know, it should be, it should be good enough that. You know, we're not gonna wanna make heavy traffic on it, you know. You know, we might be able to, you know, once we talk to the contractor, I don't wanna be in their way too, but you know, hopefully get, allow local traffic to be parked in the street there.
Are they gonna be a problem while we're trying to dig through, are they exploring?
Well, yeah, I mean, we'll have to still work with them, with the residents to make sure they're out of the way. Eventually they'll have to backfill, put dirt back behind the curb and stuff, and they're not gonna want vehicles there then, so. They'll wait. We'll have to just keep it updated.
They'll be off of, before they start doing any more pours and stuff, they'll be off at least a week, if not more.
We could, we could hang letters on the doors and just say, you know, feel free to, you know, come and drop off groceries, whatever, but please still remain parked elsewhere so we can finish the project in a timely manner, or something along those lines, you know.
That's what I've been telling people, see, we'll give them a notice once they are able to come down the street and park, or be temporary, temporary parking, so. Yeah, it's, we've had some delays, but I think it's. We'll see a lot of progress by Monday, or by end of day tomorrow really, so. I think everyone's been pretty happy with the way everyone's going so far. Uh, no change orders this month. We do have one pay application, pay application, uh, pay application number four for hundred nineteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. So that includes almost, adding and putting a lot of rock down, finishing up the subgrains. Moving all the existing pavement all that away. And a few other little odds and ends, but. Contract wise, we're about fifty-six percent away through the contract. With this paving, that'll be a big chunk of it. By next, by next month, I guess, or I really hope to have my next council meeting, we should be really wrapping things up. You know, be working on cleaning things up and seeding, I would hope by then, by next month, so.
Any other questions for me?
Do you need a motion, sir?
Yeah, motion made, they're paying.
I make a motion, we make pay application number four for a hundred nineteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Motion's been made, make pay application, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Chester second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, at this time, anybody wishing to speak? Nope, okay. We'll move on to city maintenance report.
Okay, um, everything's going pretty well. Water system is working well. We did have a flow switch on well two that went bad. I replaced, um, I had one on well one recently went bad, so I knew exactly what to do. That was. Made it easy, and I actually went on eBay and bought the switch for about half the money that we got it through, um, got it through, uh, automated systems the last time, so. That was a nice surprise, so everything's working there. The fiber crew, a couple people were asking about the water the fiber crew was using when they were filling their back trailers, and they were billed for. We don't have a meter for that, so we asked them to, on the honor, tell us how much they, they used, and he threw out forty thousand gallons, which I feel is a fair number. And billed them and paid for it almost immediately, so recoup that cost.
What would it cost to get a meter?
A big meter that you can fill out of, out of a fire hose, I don't know, but I've heard like three, thirty-five hundred dollars, I don't know. I'd have to actually look it up, but I've had more than one person tell me it's very expensive, so. You know, there. This town has a really quite a, um, adequate water supply. You could put in a, um, water for pay system if you wanted. Lot of towns that I was around in western Iowa had that, it was more farm community, but you could pull up and feed quarters in the machine and, you know. Fill your little trailer with water or whatever, and that's something to think about too.
We had that here, a long time ago.
Yeah.
The issue was, the guys who sent the hose in the tank, and when you shut it off, of course, what happens? It's such.
Oh, so you, well, yeah, you'd have to put a backflow preventer.
Yeah, and it became where people were not.
Gotcha. I understand.
And, I mean, I don't know, but, you know, you mentioned farmers filling water for, and that.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's just an option. The manhole lining crew came to town and they have to use a little bit of water, and it's not that often that this is an issue, but. If you were gonna spend money on some sort of metering device for that operation, then that would be my suggestion. Well, if you make, sell some water, it would help pay for the metering device, but.
Farmers can go, if you're, if you do work through, if you want to see do your stuff through co-op, you can go up the elevator and they'll fill you.
Gotcha.
They filled us twice.
Yeah. No problem. Um, still planning on trying to get to curb stops that are, when I was finding all of them for the fiber crew, they were either too low or in a couple cases, too high. Still hoping to, to get some of that done this summer. Onto the sewer system, the manhole lining went very well. It was very similar amount of manholes that they're gonna be able to cover, maybe even more than last year. We are, they have to, they did about, I think it was fourteen or fifteen, that they actually got done. While they were here, they have to come back and do the ones on Mood Heart. And then there's still forty, they charge by the foot, the vertical foot, there's still forty foot worth left for them to do. And I'm, I'm already seeing again a drop in the numbers, you know, when we have a rain, it doesn't go as high, and it comes down quicker. When we get the rain events, so that's very, very helpful. I would like to maybe still consider later, in the summer, doing some lining. We have money budgeted for sewer lining, but I'd like to get those manholes kind of done first. Kind of be able to see in the, in the records, you know, you can't tell about the rain, but still you might be able to judge what got you the most bang for the buck, basically is what I'm after, so. The lagoons are, the hot weather's been kind of nice to us on the lagoons, it's evaporating water nicely, the lower than average rainfall is making that situation, so there shouldn't be any problems up there. Onto maintenance stuff, the Amish crew put the new roof on the pole shed, that went beautiful, in and out in one day. Everything that I see, looks like they did a good job. And Brett, he's, it might be October before he gets here, but he, we're on his list to do the steel on the sides and the doors.
Did they have to replace any rafters?
No, he said it all looked good. It was all solid when they screwed into it, so I think we caught it in time. So, I was, I told him, you know, if you got any soft spots, let's get it fixed, and he said all the screws sank good and tight, so no worries. Service up all the mowing equipment and kind of the mid-season tune-up. The mowing is going well, we're able to stay ahead of it. We're gonna really kind of start pushing now with benefit day coming to try and keep everything really nice and trimmed up and mowed up neat. John's been doing most of the mowing and doing a good job. I know there's some potholes erupting out on the streets. But I'm trying, I got six bags of pothole patch left, so I'm, I'm gonna try and avoid using them if I can. Knowing, you know, the milling and overlaying's coming, and I'll probably call Pleasner in the morning. When that paver's running, that means they're only a few days from having that intersection done, so. We can maybe still have a chance of getting that baby done by benefit day, if Pleasner's schedule would allow. So, that's next on the list. We started doing some erosion control around the culverts west of town on Roosevelt. The water's starting to cut next to the big culverts going underneath Roosevelt, so, and I. We got a, a big roll of fabric when we did the, the long drainage channel there, um, on the north side of the road. I got plenty of it left, so. Just a little time, little fabric that we already own, and, and a little bit of erosion stone, and we're gonna just kind of rock around those. Most of those culvert entrance and exits to make it easier to mow and keep the water from cutting the dirt out. Ongoing project when weather allows.
Were you able to get a lot of that dirt out in the middle of it?
Yeah, yeah. Well, the one down on Burnett, is that the one you're talking about? Oh, yeah, that one I got completely cleaned out. That's next on the list. That went way better than I imagined. Um, we got lucky too, we rented the excavator, and it was a smaller one, it's a, just in reference numbers, it's a, the model is a seventy-five, so it's bigger than Marty's machine, but it's not really big. After the first two days of using it, it started running terrible, and thought it was fuel filters. Anyway, we lost two days of running, and then they finally brought me a one forty. So like Marty's would be like a thirty-five, that was a seventy-five, they brought me a one forty that was on steel tracks, but it had rubber pads. That was best thing that could've happened, 'cause it had another four foot worth of reach. And, you know, just was bigger, faster, and, um, so I got all the silt out of the creek bed piled up on the bank, and then I rented a, um, little walk-behind track skid loader, uh, from Star Equipment, and used the excavator and dropped her down there in the, in the cells, and, and I spent. I rented it for the day. I got it done in a day, cleaning all the silt out of the cells. You know, it, it just couldn't have gone any better, really. Um, and then bucketed that last little bit out, and Dan Sherman came and looked at the spalling on the edge of the culvert, that's where the concrete's getting a little rotten, and he is set. Whenever he's got a break in between his bigger projects, he's gonna come and, and fix that up. I said worst-case scenario, dollar-wise, he said six thousand bucks to get that concrete fixed. I think it'll be less than that. He thinks it'll be less than that, but that's worst-case scenario, so between. Even with, with my time and renting the two machines and Dan's expense for the concrete, we aren't gonna have over nine thousand dollars in that entire project. And Raji.
The rental machines was less than fifteen hundred.
Yeah, yeah, and Raji quoted us forty just to get the silt out, and that wasn't fixing the concrete yet, so. I'm very pleased with how that went, so. Soon, and I ordered signs from Prison Industry, not really signs, but warning markers. Uh, that was the other thing in the report, the O T report was, and I found three of the four, they used to be there in the muck when I was digging it out, but they're all mangled and the reflection's all gone, so I've got the yellow and black hash mark markers to put on the four corners once we get the concrete fixed up, so we'll be hundred percent in compliance on the culvert. Only other thing I can think of is, um, I've got a couple vacations planned. We're planning on leaving second to last week in July here, wife and I for, I'd be missing about four days. I'll make sure I've got John lined up to take care of everything, and Sharon, if necessary, if John's a little busy. Going to Colorado for a few days, then we're back home for a week, and then on the fifth or fourth of August, we're leaving for Maine for a family reunion, and we'll be gone a full week, so we'll return the following Friday or Saturday. Again, I'll let Kevin know just in case, and John and Sharon and make whatever arrangements is necessary to, um, you know, handle things if anything pops up, and we know we have the sewer guy right here, so, yeah. Other than that, um, I can't think of anything. I don't think I've missed anything. Got any questions? Other question?
Well, it's gonna be a heck of a rain for us to really have to worry about that lift station now, that you've got a lot of that salt. I mean, we had some pretty good rains, and we still didn't.
Yeah.
I know it probably got up there, but I bet it wasn't nothing like we've experienced in the past.
Yeah, no, this two-incher, um, the top high number was eighty-three thousand gallons, and that would've normally been, in my experience, would've been one, one thirty, forty.
At least?
Somewhere in there.
What was your height? Did you ever see what height thing came up to?
I've got that thing dialed down. It's only, it only runs from two to four, and the alarm never went off, so. You know, I doubt, I honestly doubt with an eighty-three thousand gallon pumpage that it even had both pumps on at the same time. I bet it was able to cycle and just run one pump at a time.
Cause that's not, what are we, what are we pumping for water a day?
On, like, right now, this morning, um, I was at, at forty-eight thousand for a day.
Jeez.
And we're, I mean, that, that's the, what I pumped out of the lagoons, out of the, you know, the pumping out of the wells is probably averaging forty-four, forty-five, and I'm pushing fifty, forty-eight to fifty up to lagoons in this kind of weather.
Really?
So. Yeah, that's, that's, that's a lot better than it used to be.
That two-inch rain, I don't, I think you were a little conservative on what your pumpage would've been. It probably would've been.
It might've been.
Two hundred thousand.
It might've been, cause it was going over the culvert down there. I mean, you know, that's a pretty good indication. If it's going over the culverts to the lagoons, that means we're, we had a lot of water, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? We'll go ahead, you want to, you have a motion of wage increases?
Uh, we passed this last month, but we just didn't have the resolution ready, and I keep one in the book, and then I keep one with payrolls. When auditors come, they see why wages change.
Okay.
Well, we just need to pass the resolution.
I would make a motion that we, I make a motion to accept resolution oh-six dash two thousand seventeen dash one, a resolution setting the salaries for employees of the city of Almanet for the fiscal year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen.
Motion made, we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I can comment. Charlie, you did a nice job.
Oh, thank you.
Resolution for, um, oh-seven, page two, oh-seven, page one for Kirkenberg, what?
Something like that.
Kirkenberg.
It's the LC now under the ground there.
It's like a trap with a gate.
Yeah.
It's, it's, you know, LC Housel place, if that helps you. Sure. Do we have a number on this? Resolution, there's none on the top line.
Motion to accept resolution zero-seven, two-seven, twenty seventeen dash one S.
Oh, I see.
Good God.
We have a motion for that?
He just made it.
Oh, he just did. Oh, I thought you were. Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Say a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this next one's green space and fire station. This is something I'm gonna bring up, um. We've got this flower bed out here by the fire station, and then on the corner, there's a little rose bed, and then we've got the sign south of town and north of town. I'm gonna, I'm gonna propose, I guess, guys, that we either, let's try to find somebody to take care of them. Right now they're crappy looking, cause there's weeds growing up, um, and everything else. What I'd like to see you do is, um, get the garden club, either the garden club or F F A, either one, whoever wanted to do it, if they wanted to do it, but I would probably start with the garden club first. And pay them like two, three hundred dollars a year to take, maintain them, put flowers in them, keep them up.
I will say, the one down at the fire department. East side is fine, as you can see all these flowers go this way. The west side does not, doesn't get rain. We can have a two-inch rain, and that's gonna be harder than a rock, cause that tree prevents everything from hitting.
To clarify.
That's the hard part with that.
To clarify that, it would be, we would pay them X amount of dollars plus any type, plus payment for materials that they would need, is that correct?
Here, we could put it in with allotment, or you could give them like three hundred dollars or four hundred dollars, and that would be any flowers they wanted to buy, plus they get kept fixed. I don't care how you do it.
No, I was just asking if that's something that we'd consider.
But I think it doesn't get maintained.
Well.
I tried to keep the weeds out.
The, the deal is, you're gonna pay him X amount of dollars per hour to pull weeds in a flower bed, or go do something that maybe is more prudent, when you got people that would probably do it.
And let them put in what they want.
And let them put their time in, and.
Do they wanna do it, Matt? Do they wanna do it?
I don't really see that.
He's wanting permission to ask.
I'm just asking permission.
With a dollar amount, I think.
To go to him and ask him. And I did talk to Jeannie Neighbors one time about the north, or south of town here, the, the sign, cause it does have a flower bed down there, and was, I went down and weed whacked it the other day, but I didn't know there was plants in there to cut. I didn't see it for all the grass. So there was a couple plants, flower plants in there, but if they could take and just keep what we did, you know, take a look, for example.
Well, the big thing, they can mulch, you know, get the flowers and just mulch it to keep the, most of the weeds out, which is gonna cost, that's why I was saying you're gonna have to pay him so much and then maybe cover expenses.
Or we ask the, the F F A, because I think those kids have to do projects every year, do they not?
I think that's why we got the sign to be the water cover.
And then we offered to buy the plants because we're taxes now.
Well, they got their greenhouse up there.
Well, there you go. Even better.
It might be the first option.
Well, and you could split it up too. You could ask the garden club to do the fire station and ask the F F A to do the ones that are down in the road ditch, you know.
I don't know if the garden club, those people want to grow in that road ditch.
I'd made it better down there, but I still don't know if they wanna go down in the ditch, I don't know.
But it's just something I think we need to do, because it really looks shady. I mean, they're not gonna give to anybody, but it just, they need to be maintained.
So if we, obviously, I think, I don't know, but approval, so who's gonna make the contact? You or Sharon or what?
This went, this went a few thousand even annually, Sharon, in the funds thing.
I just, we never budgeted for it.
Don't we have like a thousand dollars?
Thousand dollars. Well, but lease spend, probably three, four hundred a year on the pot stuff.
Yeah, well, it's still leases.
Still leases.
It was gonna be by any Christmas lights or something like that, or something like that. But, I mean, I would check if that's.
I mean, it probably even have the issue, maybe we can go home.
F F A might jump right on them.
They're gonna make some, give them next month.
Well, maybe we get everything out of there, and the next year they can start a component.
According to this, we've budgeted fifteen hundred dollars, but to me, the application, we'd spend eleven hundred.
So far, we spent eleven hundred?
Right.
Well, that was last year's.
Well, that's why I say it left.
Yeah, we had to up that, cause normally we have thousands, it's been over, so we upped it.
So we probably have fifteen hundred this year.
Probably could've done, cause we would've done the budget last, but I don't know.
Well, and I don't anticipate buying any more Christmas lights at this point, which was probably why we went over last year.
Well, the other thing is, it would be the first month, we'd have to amend it. Amend it for a hundred dollars or two hundred, or whatever it is.
But what do you guys think? How much do you think? You might make it worth your time.
Well, they can think about it, cause I mean, it'd be next spring before they plan, unless they wanted to some fall plans. But it is dry on that one side down, and they're gonna have to really.
Speed, water.
Practice with the fire.
Anyways.
See what they wanna do.
Do you have a ten or a dollar out, you want, kind of, they would ask to, kind of, you know, like a penalty or a lot of blocks, you know, it's like.
How many flower beds do we have?
Well, actually, there's one down.
I think, I'm thinking about tearing that out.
Yeah, we're gonna tear that one out, cause it's across from Days.
Across from Days. It's just a bush and weeds.
The lions came and take care of it.
Rocket, rocket or something, done with it, because it's, it's way beyond.
The fire station, that little one up there in the corner, I think I'd take that one out too. It's just a pain to go around.
Yeah.
It was just rose bushes.
I'll wait that one.
But they take care of it.
I think they do that too. They could take that out, put sod in, it'd be done. You know, we could just.
So what are we talking, flower beds? Three, maybe? Or two?
Just one and two, three.
Three?
If we do the ones under the sign.
Hundred dollars a bed? Which isn't, I mean, if you do it right, that's, it's a lot of work. I mean, if it's a school, it'd be a donation to the FFA program or whatever. I don't know.
Yeah, that'd be for labor, that'd be, you know, that you pay for anything that we give them.
Nothing's cheap.
So, you know, that's why.
No, you're right. I, if, if they do a good job, it's, it, it's work. I don't, I would think if you're gonna include the plannings and everything, well, I don't think he'd be online saying a thousand dollars. You can buy, you can. We could budget that much, you wouldn't have to spend.
Well, let's ask them how much they think it would take for flowers. I mean, they're gonna put in annuals, they're gonna put in perennials. I mean, it may be a one-time shot.
I know where they can get hot chicks free.
You know what? They won't, they won't grow on that west side after I did. They dry up. Cause they grow on this side.
Okay, well, I'll talk to them.
Talk to them.
See what they think.
Yeah, and see what they have idea for flowers.
Do we wanna leave them a limit?
Well, we're not doing anything this year.
Oh, not this year?
It's kinda late in the year. I mean, you can't.
Yeah, you can't plant anything now. It'll just be, you know, weeded.
You can get plants cheap though.
Perennials is when you're putting them in. Trust me. I just spent much.
Okay, well, I'll talk to, I'll get a hold of Jeannie and talk to her and, you know, the FFA director, whoever knows it.
If she's new, I don't know her name. If you, if you call into the school and just ask, I don't, she's probably not working right now, so. Um, but they'll be able to tell you, give her, give you her name and she's real gung ho though, so I would imagine that she would jump right on this, so.
I'll check with that. Great. Uh, Lonley Golf Carts.
Uh, this is something that came up once before, uh, that Councilman Menson brought up, um. Spoke to him the other day and then kind of shorted up into an actual, uh, chapter. There's a copy of it in your packet, just to explain that a bit. Beyond some of the email. Now, this is chapter thirty-four new. The reason I like that is because under the equivalent of our public safety ordinance, is chapter thirty-four is currently in use. It would be the pleasure of the council if you wanted to put this through. You'd have a couple of choices. The logical place for it, thirty-three, I believe, the snowmobiles, so thirty-four is probably the logical place for addressing golf carts. So that means there'd have to be a shift in the current ordinances to push those down to the first reserved one, which I believe is forty-three. Now, if you didn't wanna shift, push those down, then you could put this to forty-three, but like I say, it kind of knocks them out of sync a little bit. But, uh, that's why I proposed it, that's why we proposed it, is chapter, um, thirty-four and then shifting all the other, um, all the other ordinances down. Obviously, with any shift, you'd have to go back and make sure they weren't cross-referenced to anywhere else, but that's easy enough to do, but that's why it's called thirty-four. Anyway. Beyond that, the highlighted sections there refer directly to the code of Iowa, so if you're wondering where some of this stuff came from and everything. Obviously, the, the definitions come from standard definitions of golf carts and things like that. And then the, uh, highlighted sections are just pretty much cut and pasted out of the code of Iowa. And then anything else is the enhancements that the city would put into place, so, um, and those are based upon oh, everything from safety to, uh, stuff that, uh, Councilman Menson had put together from, um, not only other ordinances, but the knowledge of golf carts and things like that, so. Let me tell you that based upon some of the, uh, items such as thirty-four dot ten, uh, five, those are some of the lowest fees that of any ordinance that, uh, had been, uh, put out there. And, um, I, I'm a supporter of this. Um, I have seen golf carts around town and although, um, we could, uh, turn a blind eye to the golf courts, or the golf carts in town, I don't think it's probably gonna put a stop to them. And you could say that it's a, a law enforcement problem or whatever you wanted to do, but I think if we regulate it, we have a better chance of not only the uh, safety factor of your carts and regulating that, but also, um, the revenue portion of it. I do believe that it's not overpriced. Control it at that point and have some safety regulations in place rather than do nothing with it. I'll defer to Councilman Menson.
Charlie, I know you and I have talked about the, um, fees and I had discussed it with a few people around town. Well, we had first talked about fifty dollars. And the person flat said to me, well, I'm not gonna pay it. I'm like, okay. Well, Central Cities is like, I think Central Cities is thirty. I think Monticello's is twenty-five. So that's where we came up, or I should say, I came up with twenty-five. Now, I also looked into the price of like, uh, I don't know if you guys all saw an email, the sticker that Charlie kind of designed. I think it's great. Little three-inch by five-inch sticker. I went to cutting, I'm gonna butcher this, I think it's called Cutting Edge Design, right, Marion? And he told me he would charge at the most, if we ordered like ten the first year or fifteen, three dollars a sticker and they would be numbered. Like, for example, Charlie wrote seventeen dash zero-one, the next one would be zero-two and so on. He said, yes, at the most, it would be three dollars, more than likely two fifty first sticker. Uh, I've talked to some people at work about this in our traffic department and they said that, um, prison industries would probably be less than that. I sent out an email to them, had not heard anything back, or sent out a request for a quote, have not heard back from them yet.
My thought would be go with the one in Marion, just mainly because, so you order twelve and you have, all of a sudden, you don't have twelve people licensed golf carts. And you need stickers, you probably could go down there and he probably'd have you stickers in, more stickers in, in ten minutes where prison, if you're getting them up there, you might be two weeks.
I could probably.
I mean, you know what I'm saying.
Probably print our own the first year. Some too get feel for how many we're gonna need.
No, but you know what I'm saying.
I mean, we probably, I don't think there's gonna be a ton of these to where we'd have to worry about. The twenty-five dollars annually is pretty much to cover your salary to do the application and if we had any costs in stickers, we could even do a line dash zero-zero-one or whatever and use them year after year or something. They're a little easier to duplicate that way, but with the colorization and stuff on the sticker, they're gonna be hard to fully duplicate, so. I mean, you could print twenty of them with line dash zero-zero-one through whatever and reuse them year to year, whatever you wanted to do, but I think that it probably wouldn't be a a big deal. I don't see a big, a whole bunch of criminals out there.
They're falsifying stickers. He was talking about prison industries versus Marion, and I was gonna say, the reason you'd wanna go local is if you would run out and you needed some, if we went that way.
If you're really gonna.
Yeah, I think we could probably.
Uh, one of the clerks one day, cause I mean, you put this old sticker on the fender or wherever, it's gonna be hard to see what they do in their town, is the yellow, or the flag that they have to have, the safety flag. It says twenty-seventeen on it. The next year, it says twenty-eighteen. So when they drive down the street, you can see the register this year and next year. I thought that was a nice idea. Cause then it'd quick blanch.
Then they get one every year when they renew their license?
Well, they have to have a new flag.
Is it twenty-five every year?
Yeah, it's annually. And, and there is some teeth in it. If they fail to do it this way, they can, we can, we can assess more than three hundred because of that.
So if they, if they're an habitual driver up and down Main Street, then we can not renew their license?
Yeah, and with no, you could say, let's just give it a miss and have no ordinance at all. And you could, like I say, you can call the sheriff's department. They're gonna enforce the state law. And they're gonna collect the revenue off that citation, whereas with a city ordinance, we would collect the revenue off of it, so in essence, it's probably better for us to have it. And with a city ordinance, we can impose additional safety regulations beyond the state law. And, uh, you know, those are noted in the ordinance itself. I mean, obviously, this went out in advance, so you've had some time to take a look at it, so.
So, just clarification, like, I'm not gonna, I mean, so there's golf carts continually going down that do not have a sticker? Is this something the sheriff has to, or does it go to mayor's court?
Well, um, the sheriff's department is our contracted law enforcement, so you can contact them.
They're the ones that would have to do that.
They're the ones that enforce our city ordinances.
Okay, I didn't know, because there are, at one time, there was an ordinance that the ma, the mayor or whatever, we could issue a citation.
It's a municipal infraction.
A municipal infraction.
Yeah.
And we could actually administer it and they'd have to go before a judge.
Yeah, I suppose you could. You could do that through our city attorney and do it. Might, they might be a little hard to catch. How fast do they go?
I gotta bite you.
Show them your badge.
It might be a bit hard to catch.
No, I was just curious on.
No, no, I know exactly what you mean. Yeah, you can.
I mean, by the time you call the sheriff, by the time you call the sheriff and he shows up, unless he catches him in the act, what? You're not gonna get much done. No, you're not. That's why I was saying it.
No, I just draw the contrast that if they're problematic, it's just a state fine right now, whereas with a city ordinance, yes, sir.
I've got a question here. It says golf carts shall not be parked on city streets, sidewalks, or alleys at any time. So that means if I get my golf cart, if I'm gonna go somewhere, the only place I can legally go is see you at park in your yard.
Yeah, private property. Just don't leave it parked in the middle of the street, in the middle of the sidewalk, or in the middle of an alley.
Where are you gonna go with it? Well, you can park in a parking spot, can't you? No, that's not what it says.
Yeah, the, uh, there's existing, uh, state and city ordinances that don't allow you to park a, a vehicle in the middle of the street, in the middle of a sidewalk, or in the middle of an alley. So that's why that's in there.
But it doesn't say anything about parking spot, a parking space.
Parking spot, legal parking spots are fine.
See, park in your parking spot. That isn't what it says.
Well, where does it say? Where are you reading this at?
Thirty-four oh-nine. You're right, it doesn't. It just says parked on a city street. On a city street, alley sidewalks, the airport, that's what it says. It needs to be changed. You're gonna go do something. You gotta do something different.
You gotta bring laws to keep going around the block.
Should say shall not be parked in the middle of. Well.
Order. Well, how would you word that? Should be properly parked in a designated parking space.
I thought we addressed it somewhere else near, but you know, they can't park on private property and they can't park, I think it's somewhere it says park legally, but we can address, that can be cleaned up, that's not.
You can't go uptown anyway, because you can't.
Right, you can't, you can't go uptown, cause you can't get across.
I can drive across.
You can cross it.
I can drive across, you can park right, right off here.
Not when it's, that's a street. You can't park on a street, it says.
Yeah, if we change that.
Well, yeah, that'd have to be changed.
I think it's, it's, yeah, I addressed that in thirty-four oh-four in the last line. Uh, golf carts shall be, shall not be operated in any school, parking lot, trail, blah, blah. Golf carts may be legally parked, may legally park in designated public parking areas.
That doesn't count Main Street, does it? Cause I mean, that's designated, but they can't be on Main Street.
You can't drive down, you can cross it.
Can you park that? You can't park on Main Street. Cause you got to drive on Main Street.
Technically, no, you can't, just can't drive on it.
Yeah, you can't park, cross, or any of the main ways.
I can see that being that.
We can clarify it then, if you think it'll be an issue, but like I said, they can't be on North Main or the other crossway through anyway.
How about South Main? Cause North Main starts right here at the corner, so they can go that way.
It, the, it's listed in there, it's clarified too, but, uh, I think I did call it North Main.
But North Main just started here.
Golf carts can't be allowed on North Main Avenue, Roosevelt Street, or North Street, also referred to as Burnett Station Road.
Yeah, but here from the stop line that way is South Main.
All right, I can clarify that. Or you can, you've got it too.
Or just Main Avenue or something.
I just lose thirty-four oh-nine, cause you addressed it up in that other area.
Well, it's also addressed in, uh.
That's what I'm saying, thirty-four oh-four.
It's in thirty-four oh-five too, so.
Yeah, and I would.
But I can fix it in thirty-four oh-four.
Yeah, I would just lose and move your numbers or whatever you have to do. That, that would clarify it a lot easier.
This is in two other places. I, I can fix that up in thirty-four oh-four and I can also fix the north and the south.
Well, and that's part of the state code, you can't drive on the main artery.
Correct. They can't be on Main anyway, you know, Main. Yeah, that's the state law, that you can't drive on the main arteries.
I mean, it'll be easy to import if we have a bitch one, we just, next year, they won't.
Might lose tires.
I mean, that's, we, you just give them warning, you tell them, you know, if you keep it up, we will not give you a license next year, so, I mean, that's the only way you can do it.
Yeah, carts have been around a while, so with or without this, there's, they've been around a while and they're gonna continue to be here with or without this, so just bear that in mind. Just trying to make a little favor.
I got a dumb question. I know this, so it says a legal driver's license. So if my kid has a learner's permit and I'm riding with him, is he considered a legal driver?
He's gonna be sixteen or have a driver's license, is what the state, that's the state code for it.
Because he's legal to go drive a car, that, you know, where I'm going with this, and I can see this happening. Oh, my son's got his learner's permit and he drives our car all over and you're not gonna let him drive a golf cart?
Is he sixteen years of age?
No, you don't have to be.
Well, this says here, I believe, sixteen years of age.
You have to parent with them.
Huh?
You have to parent with them.
Right.
Yeah, they have to possess an Iowa driver's license.
The driver.
That's in the state code, we don't regulate that.
If you fix those up, then we can send it over to the attorney, see what he thinks that the council wants or.
And go from there, send it up, go out to every.
I was putting about, putting about moving our numbers because, was that an issue?
Do you, I, I don't, you can put it at forty-three, it just looks kinda clunky in the code. I dare less.
You have to, otherwise you have to print all them books and then you recodify and the whole bit.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying we need to make sure it's clear on what we're doing exactly.
Do we have a golf ordinance in there, don't we? It just says no golf carts allowed. We could just repeal that one and then put.
Put this in place.
Yeah.
All right, this is under the traffic, I didn't see anything under the traffic section about it. But if you want it as forty-three, I'm happy to change it.
I don't know what the ordinance, I'm just saying is, it comes down to issue when we go to recodify the numbers and everything and you were talking about maybe moving some things. We wanna make sure it's clear when.
Yeah, I believe forty-three, forty-four, and forty-five are all reserved right now, so if you wanna kind of clean things up.
See, in three, thirty-four, forty-four, it says golf cart, the golf cart shall not be operated on any street, so we can just repeal that one and put this one in its place.
Which is fine too, I, that's.
Where's that at?
Three, thirty-four, forty-four.
Three, thirty-four, okay, yeah, that would work.
Yeah. It just says golf carts and it's got the one sentence, we have golf carts and you'd replace that with this.
So you don't want it as, as its own new ordinance section? Is that a subsection of one of the, uh, other ones, right?
Yep, it is subsection of streets and traffic code. And under traffic code, and that's where in the back, it's listed, you look up golf carts, it's already listed as three, thirty-four, forty-four. So, and we could do that until we recodify and really wanna change the whole thing, next time we got another ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, I don't, I don't care which we do. It might be, either, like I say, either way, and if we put this into place, we have to go back through and hit all those sections that apply to it.
Well, what I'm, you're gonna wanna take out the, you're only wanna take out the section that says no golf carts allowed, when we put it in, so like, I think inserting this in there would be the logical, I mean.
Cause if you look by the index, it's already listed there.
It's already listed, so it's not gonna be a, I mean, that's my opinion. I don't know if it's wise or not. But when we start paying a lawyer to look at things and do things, let's have a, a detailed description exactly what we are wanting to do, so he's not sitting there.
Well, he doesn't codify anyway.
I think that's where you have to put it, though.
Yeah, cause actually, if you look in traffic code, then it's listed as.
They go right to it.
Well, we don't have to change much.
Right, right.
Thanks for your advice, it worked.
Uh, that was mostly Charlie. Thank you, Charlie.
Well, I just put it in a different format.
He made it look a little better than I did.
No kidding. Well, like I say, I think they're gonna be here anyway, we might as well make it a little safer and collect the revenue and regulate it, so.
Implement it, of course. That's my only question.
Well, we don't, we don't enforce anything, that's the sheriff's office.
I understand that, I understand that.
But if we sit in here and we see a, a visual violator, just like you said, or anybody said here, we just don't issue them another sticker the next year?
I think if they come up here and register it, they have to meet the requirements to register it, and that at least makes it a little bit safer, 'cause we go above and beyond the state code. If they continue to use them in town and fail to register or meet the, meet the, uh, ordinance levels, at least we can, uh.
This is kind of the registration form I pulled from other cities and put together.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I didn't do one until I knew which way everybody wanted to go.
Could you check, Sharon, where the flags, they do the flags at?
Uh-huh, it's Melbourne, but I'll find out from, uh.
See where the, I think that's a good idea, I like.
Well, yeah, 'cause then it's lamps, you can see, because that sticker on the fenders.
You put the sticker on the flag.
And they also make them have to have a flag.
Well, you have to, that's state code.
That don't mean that it's gonna be there, but if you pay twenty-five bucks, or whatever you're paying for your sticker, you're gonna show it, and if it's on a flag, well, the flag's gonna get mounted. It might not be all the way up in the air, but it's gonna be on there.
And you have this in work?
I think so.
Yeah, okay, cool. Well, I can recreate it if you don't.
Yeah, I don't, you know what, I don't know, because I pulled two or three different cities.
I can recreate it.
Where do we go with this?
We make the corrections we want, and then it goes to you.
Make the corrections, and then have a lawyer.
Oh, yeah, I got it.
And then we can set up.
Well, make the corrections, we approve it, and then a lawyer.
Well, if, no one here.
Or the lawyer, and then we approve it, 'cause he's gonna, he might make changes.
Let me put it this way, if three out of five here don't hate it, then I'll make everything and just send it to you, and we'll go from there.
Yeah, but the lawyer has to say, yes, I would enforce this if it's eighteen months, so.
I think just a lawyer should make.
Okay.
Thank you again, Charlie.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, moving on, number nine, TIF training.
We've got a class in Ames on July twenty-seventh, because the GASP statement seventy-seven, tax statement disclosure is about to be implemented in June of, June thirtieth seventeen. So they've changed the whole TIF rules and regulations, so they're offering a class, one to five in Ames for a hundred dollars, or you could go down there for three days for a hundred and fifty, but then you're paying hotel and everything, and there's not really any other classes I need, so, TIF training is my, my needed class. Because we may get back on that someday, to get to the house, houses building.
Well.
I'll have to worry about it for a while.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we send her to training in Ames.
Motion made, yes, second.
Oh, second.
Press for second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, but now to the memorial benches.
So, I'm gonna just say a couple things about this, so the memorial benches were out here, I think, for a day. I took a lot of grief on Facebook about it, 'cause I was trying to stick up for the council, does anybody here know who told them to put those there?
I hope we just ask them who.
Well, I don't understand, because I look back at the meeting, and none of us made a decision to, Chester, I can't remember his last name.
Get him.
About the benches, and then they show up, and then everybody's in a tizzy because they got removed. I have no problem with where those benches go around town, but I agree with Charlie, we have to have an ordinance to regulate this, because otherwise, we can put up whatever we want.
Actually, I checked with.
We're not doing that. Here's the law.
I checked with, um, Chad Sands, who worked on our ordinance book, East, East Central Iowa Council of Governments. He says, according to our ordinance, you look under sidewalks, as long as it does not extend more than three feet from the building, it is allowed, and that is not our property. He says it's kinda like sidewalks in residential, you got the right-of-way underneath, but the sidewalk actually belongs to the business owners, so it is actually private property.
Well, and you and I kinda looked at the assessors page, and it even looks like thirty inches in front of this building is still private property.
And actually, the sidewalk out there is Gary's.
And I don't have an issue with that, but when they come to council, and they say, can we have permission to put these on city property? I'll take them at face value, and that was in June, okay, can we have permission that, these are what we got, can we have permission to put them on face value? We were sitting here as council, and no one said, oh, yeah, yeah, go ahead, everyone looked around at each other and went, hmm, there was no approval, and I said, well, you know, this kinda opens up between memorials, monuments, works of art, and things like that, I think that what we should probably do, if we're gonna do something like that, is have an ordinance, so just because we don't want anyone to take private property and put on city property. Many, many reasons, I can go through them, but I think we know, whether it's blocking a sidewalk, or blocking traffic, or ADA requirements, or the size and shape, or whether or not it contains advertising, or whether or not it has ultimate purposes behind it. Any one of us running for election or reelection, I could go put my reelection signs right, right up on the sidewalk and call it art, so.
Okay, we won't mention.
I, I get it, but you know what I'm saying, I could say, that's my donation to the city, there, we can take monuments and put up and say, donate it to the city, it won't cost you a dime, and cause any one of us, including the city, to have to maintain it, and paint it, and make sure it's safe, and keep it bolted down, and it doesn't fall over. And I, I believe there are ord- or, or regulations at the state of how big a structure actually is before it has to be engineered. So, there's a lot of reasons why we wanna regulate things like that, plus it's just good business for the city to say, hey, look, if you wanna donate something to the city, go ahead and submit it to us, we'll review it, and then we'll decide, that's just good government, and if they're also gonna give it to us, we should own it. They, we, they shouldn't, if we put a lot of money into something to mount it, or put it together, or, you know, make it a, a, a structure or something like that, and they get mad, or they change their mind, or they move, and they come back, and we have ten dollars, or ten thousand dollars invested in it, and they show up, whoever donated it shows up a week, two weeks, or a year later and say, I want it back, I'm taking it with me, I'm moving, that costs us money, and it's not our money, it's taxpayer money. So, in June, when I said, well, we need to look in this and possibly do a codes, uh, ordinance or something like this, or at least put it together, again, I can't remember, say his name, Chester says, yo, I think that's a good idea, I know I went back and watched the tape about three times, and out the door he walks. There was zero public comment about that, I went and read the Facebook posts, none of them were to me, but I did read some of them. The public never said a word, now, obviously, the public's not too worked up, there's not a lot of people here, and I haven't, no one has personally said anything to me, but, um, no one said a word. The firestorm got kicked off the moment they got set out there, and then, even then, wasn't a huge one, but at the work session that night, I did say, uh, to the folks that were there, hey, they're out there, this is not what we agreed upon, and I left it at that, as soon as they were removed, that's when the Facebook firestorm got kicked off. So, that's what he's talking about.
This is news to me, 'cause I don't do Facebook.
I've got a little bit to add, um, after hearing everything you said, and hearing other stuff during the day, 'cause Sharon and I are here, I decided to go to the Diamond Club meeting last night, and it basically boils down to that everybody that's there trying to do well for their club does not understand how city government works, and that's exactly what I was afraid of, and they to- totally took your, as a council, your decision to not take an, action as a kick in the gut, because, hey, we had these memorial benches made, you know, we want them out there. That's the rub, after I explained to them why, not that you were against their benches, they think you're against their benches. I said, I don't think they're against their benches, I don't think they're against that at all, they just, it came, this possible gift of these memorial benches caused the council to think twice about what they can and can't accept, they used the example of a enormous sculpture that is in the way of everything, if they take everything given to them and place it on city property, and it's a giant eyesore and hazard, then they have to stick by it, because they don't have any rules saying that they can keep this away from the city. After that was all explained, everybody settled down, it, it, it was not, it was not an issue then, they just did not understand, and the average person doesn't understand the channels, so, at that point, because they're doing, I think, a lot of good for the city, I walked them through what I feel is the best way for them to do anything like that in, in the future, so hopefully, they're gonna come to you better prepared. Hopefully, they're gonna come and give Sharon and I some information ahead of time, so we can do some research to make you better informed, so if they come and sit at the council meeting and ask for something, or to donate something else, you guys can make an informed decision on it at the moment, um, and then, speaking of research, after, after that, Sharon did some research, too, rather than making an ordinance for this situation, um, it was suggested that maybe just a resolution, and deal with these things as they come on a case-by-case, and handle it by a resolution might be the better, uh, way to do it, 'cause if you make a blanket ordinance, probably there's gonna be a conflict with it at some point in time or another, because it's gonna be hard to write an ordinance that would cover every kind of gift that could be given to the city.
And, and I don't disagree with that, which we left it in June, that we would research and decide what we were gonna do, this firestorm got kicked off.
They, they just brought them out, they had them done, they, yep.
What got put there, and I would submit, although we don't have every council member here, for the ones present, they can speak for themselves, but I would submit that not one council member gave the permission for them to go up, or ordered them to come down.
Yeah, no, and I don't, they're not arguing that either, they, I, they just, they, from my understanding, they, they got them delivered, they were sitting there in the shed, and it's like, well, it's a shame not to have these out, so let's get them out there. They didn't really think about the consequence, and then also, it was brought up to them, hey, you really didn't get permission, and so they, they pulled them back out, you know, and so, the, their hearts are in the right place, for lack of better terminology, they just jumped the gun.
And that was never questioned either.
Yeah, yeah, so.
We had, the incident we had in town was, I believe, they came to us, and you were around, and Dave was around, Chester probably was, when they wanted to put that memorial up for Carson, with the flag pole.
Well, actually, oh, four, I looked all that up.
Yep, and we pretty much said, you know, you guys wanna do it privately, put it there, you guys take the maintenance, you do it all, and we pretty much refused it, that it was gonna have anything to really do with the city, that was a nice gesture, but we didn't.
It was on city property, we allowed it to be on city.
We allowed it to be on city property, but it was none, we were void of all responsibilities, and as it turned out.
When it got crappy and.
They got crappy and stuff, and they had to remove it, and, and that's why what you're saying, and what you're saying, and when I heard about the benches, I just kinda sitting here, that's the first thing that came to mind, the flagpole, and here we are again, what are we gonna do, what happens when they get tarnished, not painted, not looking good? The concrete, somebody runs into them and gets hurt, I'm sitting here, same thing what you're saying, Charlie, and I think it's, I think you both are on the right track, hey, come to us with logical angle from there.
It's, it's a great idea for that ordinance, but this isn't our property, it's not city property, so you're making an ordinance on city property, which would still have nothing to do with the front of this building.
That is a fair statement, however, at the time that Chester, can't say his last name, pardon?
Casconi.
Casconi.
Chester Casconi came in, I, I had only seen an item that was referenced with a slash bench on the agenda. He gives a description of them that was very difficult to understand, he referred to them as something we had made that is currently in storage, and he gave a rough description of, of their size and shape, and what they looked like, the description that he gave that night is not what I pictured them all i- in my mind, and what they actually looked like. So when he's talking about these, first of all, like I say, that, that's not what I thought they were, but they're fine, um, and the placement of them um, is different than what I thought he was going to, where he was gonna put them, and what they were gonna look like, it's very difficult when somebody comes to council and says, I've got these benches, there's two of them, they're about this size, or they're about this deep, or about this, and this is kinda where I wanna put them, and then they approach the council and, and come to us for permission for it. That implies that they're of a size, shape, and nature, and on city property, so when I make the comment at the time in June to say, well, then perhaps we need to look at something to make sure that these are of, uh, a nature that we wanna accept and put on city property, I think that's a fair assessment to make at the time. You know, now, in, in actuality, when they say.
Even if you do an ordinance, now it's still not gonna have anything to do with this, 'cause that's not city property.
I, I absolutely agree, and I agree with your comments that we could do it by a resolution, but it doesn't negate the fact that, that everything that occurred, that you're referring to, the Facebook comments and everything like that, all started because of the placement of them and the removal of them, which had nothing to do with this council.
That's why I didn't do the case, though.
So where do we go from here?
Quite honestly, if they get permission from.
I like the resolution, I talked to Chad about that today, because, like I said, with this resolution we just did for our payroll, you have it in the book, and each year, I put at the beginning of the book, resolution such and such, and what it entails, so if we make one for that bench, in front of the book, if people go back year by year, they can see. If somebody else comes up with something else, you'd have a resolution for them, and in that resolution, state what it is, where it's going, who it will belong to, and also state in there, we will do no maintenance of any sort on any of it, you know, so that we don't run into the problem like we did down there. And then Chad said, any of that larger stuff, statues or whatever falls under your morals, decency and disorderly conduct would be any of the, you could turn down it's being our ordinances, that's unfit to accept.
Okay, Bill.
I guess I, my feeling is, long as they're going on private property, and if they get the order's permission to put it there, I already have a problem with that. 'Cause that leaves us, we have nothing to do with it, we didn't tell them what to do, we didn't do anything, now, what you're saying, if somebody wants to put up a statue of me on town property, that's a different subject.
I totally agree, but if it was going on private property, Chester, it would've never made our agenda.
Yeah, but there again, that's his lack of understanding.
That's a mistake, they got.
Yeah.
I agree. I think the council is, I know we took the crap storm, well, I didn't look at it, but on Facebook, and, and, and you know what?
It, it wasn't.
They were, they were polite. This is really almost a non-issue until they decide, okay, we're gonna put it on city property, you already say they're allowed, how many, thirty, three feet?
Three feet.
They're allowed three feet on private property, and it's.
Well, that is, that's all private property.
And it's all private property, then, what I'm concerned, same as you, timeout, timeout.
Oh, oh, just said, just said.
What I'm concerned.
Just said, we've got three people talking.
I know, and I was talking.
I know, so, let's, let's go this direction, and everybody else.
What I'm concerned, the same as you, are liability, primarily is what the issue is, I mean, that man, oppressors, liability is the big issue. Because, and I, I think it's logic, we're not liable, and it's on private property, I bet.
So he was explaining to you that, like, the sidewalk in front of my house, for example, that's mine to do with what I want?
It's under our right-of-way, it is your side, this is, it's our right-of-way, but from property line to curb in business section is the businesses.
Okay.
And the only thing, that's our ordinance states they can't have anything more than three feet out onto the sidewalk, so that you don't have people tripping and doing whatever.
Regulate that.
Yeah.
I get it, so.
That's why you have to pay for your side.
They can place a bench uptight to the wall of this building, about thirty-six inches, voila.
If Gary approves, or Renner, I guess that's the next thing, is, does Gary have the right to say yes or no, or does the post, so that will have to work out with it.
It's not.
Let me state some, okay, well, I'm just gonna throw something out there, pathetic on you, okay, what happens if somebody takes on their benches, sticks it out in the middle of, middle of the sidewalk?
Damn it, not with any of the other benches.
I know, but, I mean, if some drunk comes in and trips over, who's, who's liable, 'cause it was in the site, in city property?
It's not in city property.
Sidewalk.
All the way to the street is not city property, I thought you said three feet.
It's right-of-way, from the property line to the curb is the business, and what our ordinance states is from a fit, from the building out, you cannot come out more than three feet with anything. So that would be, if you wanna put a little patio table out there, or sell something out there, or bench out there.
Bike racks?
There you go. But if it gets moved out there, it's coming off of Gary's property and not city property.
So, yeah.
So it's his liability.
Well, it would be still their bench then, his liability.
And I hold him anyway.
So where are you gonna add some more fuel to this fire? You said, uh, bike racks. Well, then the bike racks are technically in violation of the ordinance, 'cause the bike's sticking out past the six inches.
There might be, I don't know. I'm just saying the rack isn't.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm not saying about the bike, I'm just saying the racks are legal.
Okay.
You're right, though.
So do we need anything for future?
I would make a resolution describing the bench, height, width, length, all this.
Not these, why? If it's gonna be on private property, there's no use in even going there.
Well, that's right, we don't have to.
No. I would, I.
Yeah, resolution, or if it went on to city property.
I can just explain to Chester what was decided and discussed, and let them go from there as far as contacting Gary and/or the post office, and however he needs to follow that.
That's private property, it's, it's, it's a non-city issue.
So you gotta go out more than three feet.
But if the next thing comes up, you can decide, you could use a resolution if someone does come to us and says, yeah, we wanna put up this piece of art down maybe at, say, next to the fire station, uh, at this area, you could accept or decline that. And if you accept it, you could do it by resolution, so it's documented and.
Yeah, Auburnet's not gonna get any smaller, and someday we may have a park with something like this, or whatever it is.
Yep.
We can handle it at that time, so this is just something that came up.
Perfect. Okay, moving on to the nuisance.
Uh, we got a couple properties in town, we have followed the resolution, our, our ordinance so far, on, um, sending them letters, sending them pictures. Uh, we sent one registered with the return thing, they still not doing anything. We wanna proceed with the attorney and get him involved and move it out.
What's the, what's, what's the address of this reference?
Two twenty-nine, not here, and two thirty.
They've been this.
Uh, we sent one last fall stating you needed to clean it up. We know it's the bad time of year. This spring, we sent them another one. Sent them a letter after that with pictures, and it was registered with the return receipt, so I know they got it. And they're not, yeah, that's what it still looks like.
Are these the, right along the railroad track?
Yeah.
Are we, are we, are we on, uh?
There's a couple others who just took a little nudging and they cleaned up like tall grass and brush.
How far up?
Things, but.
The other, but is he on a, or is he on railroad property, or is he on railroad property? If railroad property goes so many feet.
There's a chain link fence along there, and I would assume that's on the, on the break, but I don't know.
I think that alley or whatever, it's railroad.
Well, it is, that's what I'm saying. I think everything that's inside the chain link fence is probably on his property, but he's definitely has stuff.
I'm getting at is, I mean, I'm all for whatever, but if it's on railroad property, it's a violation where the railroad could.
Then all he's gonna do is take it here and throw it over.
I know, I'm just, I'm just asking a question, 'cause I haven't been back there.
Well, and I've had a lot of complaints, especially now that, when there's baseball down there, you've got other teams coming, you turn around, you look, and it's like, oh crap.
What was their response? Have you gotten a response back at all?
They're working on it. They sent out an extra bag of garbage.
They sent out an extra three truckloads of garbage.
Yeah.
When did you send them?
Point being, we followed the ordinance as it should be, so it's basically just a decision of, do we, do we go to the attorney and start that process? 'Cause it, it is gonna cost, you know, the city some money to do that, um, especially if they decide to fight.
And I gave them till July first, and here's the thing I got back that they got it. Sent them one last November. And all these always include pictures. Sent them one in September. Sent them one last year in January.
Okay, I'm just saying, you sent the certified.
Yeah, that was the last step, we finally sent certified.
Which is what we're supposed to do. And that was what date? I'm sorry, you started naming off a bunch of dates, and I forgot the first.
That was June fifth. And so we gave them till July one, which was three weeks. And well, now it's four weeks. And I just took these pictures, some of them Tuesday.
There's been a little spiffing up in the front yard, but no action in the backyards on both properties, basically, you know, just trying to gloss.
What is, um, Sloan's like?
That's the other one.
Yeah, it's, that's.
They're getting pretty bad back there too?
Oh, yeah. It's, yeah, it's chest deep for fifty, sixty feet.
Yeah.
Are you looking for?
This one is, is, um, okay. I'm not, see, I'm on railroad tracks, so they can't, I wasn't on their property.
It's not very much used to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, compared to what it used to look like.
Yeah, but I hate, that's what's living in there.
Yeah.
Are you seeking an opinion, or are you seeking a?
Well, I'm asking if we want to proceed further with the attorney, which will run into some dollars, but it may be the only way.
You're gonna go to the attorney from there normally?
Is it, is that a, so an opinion from us or an emotion?
A motion to go forward with the attorney.
I have a problem with that.
Enforce the ordinances, I mean. In your letter, didn't you say that if it was not cleaned up, we were gonna proceed with the matters? Is that what was said in his letter?
Can we?
If no improvements are made, the city will contact the certi- city attorney and proceed with an abatement notice per Iowa code three sixty-four dash one two three H.
Can they bill for the cost of the attorney?
I don't get to, we get to do that last time, or not?
No, I don't think we did.
I don't think we did.
That letter commits us.
Yeah.
We enforce ordinances, in my opinion.
For Iowa code and.
Are you looking for a motion? I make a motion, we proceed with this as Sharon's letter stated we would. We contact our lawyer and have him start the, did you call it an abatement?
Abatement.
Abatement, statement.
I'll second that. All right.
Okay, one more three-point play program?
Yeah, I got this email, and I thought it was a scam, so I didn't answer it. So they sent me another one, and I thought, oh, it's still a scam. Well, then they called me, and I said, well, it was a scam. Well, no, we really won fourteen thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. And what it was is university, or UNI does the three-point play programs, so so much money to decide every three-point. And they used to always give it to Cedar Falls Park and Rec. Well, they started this year distributing it to cities. And so what they did was, after three-point, people could text in their city, and they judged it by the number of votes per population, and we won.
What's that?
Fourteen thousand, two hundred and twenty, no.
Out of what, eighty-two thousand?
Well, that's the other one, yeah, 'cause this is, Panthers was four.
It's still fourteen thousand dollars, I can't go over and pick that check up.
Yep.
Well, I had a conference call with them the other day, there's three of them called. And, so it really is real, they promised me again it was real. And it needs to be used for an active, like a park playground trail. So they called just to see where we were at in the city, what we had, um, what we may like to see. And I said, you know, we've got this green space out here, I said, we've been dying to do something. And I got the feeling from them that, um, well, they wanted to know if we needed a trail going out there next, and we already made people fix their sidewalk. But, um, they want, I think something like, they said maybe even like a frisbee golf or something that they could put their name on. So either the trail going out there, a certain item in the park, and he says, I know this will never play for a playground, but it's a good kickstart.
Would the school actually put frisbee golf out there?
Is he on private property or something?
Right.
Private property.
I think we need to do some, I think we need to do something out there anyway.
Well.
Yeah.
My thought process is, you know, we've got a couple of big projects going on, but I, I'd really like to press the fire station idea for next fiscal year. That being said, spending the winter before budget time, getting that prepped, and that is going to happen, which I think it can, you, we develop at the same time, because it's more or less just dirt work, we develop the green space that we were given along with that building project. And yes, we can either take a trail from where private property ends and starts, and even wind it all the way to the fire department and make it go all the way around the property we own, or if you get that green space developed even into a flat level grass play area, you can put frisbee golf or whatever you wanted in it. I mean, there would be a abundance of options then, if, if we go that route. Um, it's just hard to develop the green space unless you gotta plan for the fire station, 'cause you got a whole bunch of duplication of dirt work.
Talking behind like Josh's house back there?
Yeah, yeah.
How far would fourteen two twenty go?
I don't know, I mean.
And I don't know if we can use it, we have to use it for something actual.
He's talking about after the dirt.
Yeah, I'm talking about, do the dirt work for the fire station, get your level playing field, and then either do a trail or a frisbee golf.
Well, you gotta, what is, you gotta know your dimensions.
He did give us a date on it, he says, how about, what we thinking of in the spring, maybe a phase one of your project? Because I told him what we've got going on, I said, it'd be like a community center, fire station, park. I said, and to be honest, I said, this year got put on back burner because of the street project. So this guy on the back room goes, do you need sidewalks on that? And I said, part of the project. So, I mean, they're really interested in something they can name. But he knows that we've got this, he says, well, get the money, and he says, they wanna see a plan, and by next spring, which he says, I know this is the time of year, you don't really do that sort of stuff.
And sometimes.
I know.
Sometimes gifts like these are the kickstart to other grants and other things, because some people, some of these programs want to see that there is some other funding for a project before they kick their cash in. And so you can already say, yes, we've already received fourteen thousand dollars from this program, we, we're seeking another X number of dollars to get this phase of our project done. Um, it, it could just be the kicking off point, um, you know?
Do you guys do the REAP grants?
I don't have a check, I don't, I don't know, I'll have a check, I guess.
'Cause that was one I was looking into that would be, but, I mean, now it's this, we can start looking into some of these. And, and like he says, once we say we've already got fourteen thousand in there, you can start pulling in more grants. And they said they were gonna put together some ideas now that they know where we're at, what we're looking at, maybe what other projects they have done, just throw some ideas out to us. But he'd like to get us some money by the end of the year, and he said, maybe, you know, we'd look at a spring, a spring start or a spring, something happening. It's fourteen thousand dollars.
Thank you to the person that.
I know, I'd like to thank whoever.
Several did.
Yeah.
Several, your person or persons.
I can get a family of four kids all on their phones while they're watching the UNI game, and good things happen evidently.
I'm telling them to watch Iowa and start doing it.
Yeah.
And I see your phone bill, I just want to check.
Yeah.
Yeah, you and I, you know, 'cause you probably do anything, you gotta have a plan for something.
And that's what he said, you know, maybe in some.
I think it's flash, I don't think it's a reaction, it would be a great idea, but it's a small one.
Yeah.
It would be.
Oh, I think, yeah.
It would be great.
It would be heavily used. All the city people that have them tell it, tell us it's the worst nightmare on the planet as far as, you know.
That's even more costly.
Disease control and.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, because one little kid can't hold it, and next thing, you're shutting it down, bleaching and power washing the whole thing, and everybody's standing there looking at you while it's closed down for an hour.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I don't think there's anything else, there you go.
Thank you. Now, I mean, just get ideas and, and think about things, because there is applying grants.
We need to find out what maybe a cost of level of dirt on.
Yeah, I got, um.
Second row, great grass, isn't it?
No, no. I've got another harebrained idea too, to, to make that better, but I, it, there's no use even mentioning it, delay developing, 'cause it is so, such a tiny possibility to help with making that green space decent, so I'll, I'll keep working. Well, we developed dirt out there at the culvert, you know, uh, this fall, when the crop's out, I can pull those piles of dirt out that I, the silt.
I would keep that.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I'm keeping it, I'm not letting that go.
That's good dirt.
And I think we'll have a little black dirt left over from Moot Heart, they piled up all the black dirt they could get, some of it will have to go back in. But I think we'll, we'll gain some black dirt from that too, so. And I, and mulch, I mean, I'm making mulch as we speak, the, you mix that compost in that I'm turning the tree branches into, and that makes, helps that black dirt go further too, so.
I have a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Yep.
No discussion, no discussion.
That can.
Chester always in favor?
There's no.
You wanna go to adjourn?
There's no. I thought I heard him holler nay from in there.